Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting Tuesday, May 24th, 2022 at 7:04 PM. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is an A and R to create three new parcels from lot one through four. This is map 107, lot one through four located at Bunny's Road. Is, please, if there's somebody?
I have the revised notes.
Excellent. So unfortunately, I can't put them on the screen, so.
Can just share a paper copy with the board members, just plenty of them, we'll talk about them. I'm fairly sure I sent a email about this. Bunny's Lane. By the way, starts in Plymouth.
Right.
The first time I drove there, I'm like, this, Plymouth has the Bunny's Lane too? And then I, about 10 minutes, 10 seconds later, I hit the Carver line, I'm like, that's the end. So this one's different from that one. But you can't tell. That stripe in the middle is now wider than it used to be. So that's the change from plan.
No worries.
So that lot three is now wider than it used to be. There, Richard. Goes to essentially the same minus the width of the roadway.
If you could take a moment to identify yourself, give us a little rundown on what the plans for this are and.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kenneth Conti. I'm here with Beals and Thomas. I'm here on behalf of AD Makepeace to present an approval not required subdivision plan, basically creating two new, three new lots from the existing parcel. The main purpose of the plan is to create this lot three, which is, what we did is we created a 50-foot wide strip of land that encompasses the existing traveled way, which is known as Bunny's Way, also formerly known, I believe, as Old Place Road many, many, many years ago. The plan is the result of a land court survey that we prepared and the purpose again is to create this strip of land that's going to encompass Bunny's Road. And I think it's the intent of AD Makepeace to transfer the title of that strip of land to the town. As you know, the, that road is the main access to the camp lots at the existing lake and that access has been used for quite a while and, you know, certainly a need, I believe, to create and, you know, have it be town-owned property.
I don't notice any, anything on here telling us upland areas in lot one and two. And I'm going to expect that lot three is upland as it's a road or?
Yeah, lot three is all upland. I believe there's, should be totals on there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, under LC Lot Two, they have a wetland area, 102,000 square feet, water area, 100,000 square feet. Out of that, 2,832,000, 0114 square feet. Same with Lot One C. The calculation underneath that, the dimensions for Lot One C in Carver, 700,000 square foot, bog area, 28,000 square foot, water area, 19,000 square feet.
Have you filed an abbreviated notice of intent with the CONCOM?
No.
Do you feel that is part of the submission of an application for an A and R? It's a requirement?
I don't believe that it is.
It's outlined in step 22 of the subdivision laws that. So, I mean, outside of, it is, so this isn't a public road. It's currently owned by AD Makepeace?
Correct.
And lot, and lot three isn't to be considered a lot. It's to be considered an unbuildable parcel?
Yes.
And where is the frontage for lots one and two in regards to this?
So the, I guess you would say currently the, we had two options in creating this plan. We could have left that way, which was in existence prior to the subdivision control law.
Okay.
We classified as a way. We could have provided frontage for lot one along that traveled way. But it's our intent in this plan again to kind of make that eventually, you know, our, you know, we would think that the town would accept that as a public road. And that's why we gave it the 50-foot width so that, you know, in the event that the town needs to improve it, you know, make it, you know, increase for whatever drainage or purposes possible that, you know, they could make it a road eventually. And then, you know, lot one and lot three would, sorry, lot one and lot two would have frontage along those right-of-way lines. But right now, you know, they would just have required access to the road, or at least that traveled way, that paved road right now.
And when did this road come into existence, a way?
It's, it's again, like I said previously, and again, this is from what I could tell back in the 30s, it was known as Old Place Road.
Okay.
And then, you know, kind of just was a gravel path. And I believe it's paved now.
And development on lots one, I mean, one and two? Is there plans for that?
I'm not aware right now of that. I mean, I don't think that's before the board at this time, so.
Well, we should understand the potential for development on this area as to providing municipal services. Has this been put in front of the fire department or DPW at all? Have they had any recommendations in regards to this?
Yes, sir, if I may. So this is a bit unusual because this is one giant lot with this way, way number C, as we know from our experience reading Massachusetts Journal, that way in existence prior to subdivision control. So when the plan came in, I talked to Ken about what the intent was, and he had told me from 33 feet, because that was essentially the width of the roadway as it exists. So I reached out to police, fire, everybody in the technical review committee and asked them for their opinions about this. And my question was if their intent is now, intent is one thing, but action is another, it still has to go to town meeting if it wants to become a public way at some point in the future. So, so I asked all of them for their questions, comments about this. And my question was, should be looking at a 40-foot right-of-way or a 50-foot right-of-way because 33-foot was just a very odd number and not usable for much other than identifying paths. So I heard from the operation and maintenance department, which is essentially our DPW, that they do in fact maintain the road when someone tells me they maintain a road. By the way, this is the long answer. You know, I don't have any short ones. I'm trying, working on the short answers. But so, so when Kent told me they maintain the road, I said, well, plowing and sanding is not maintaining a road. So when I talked to DPW, they said, yeah, we've paved it. So it's one of those ways in existence prior to that you could certify has been in existence or had been maintained by the town. So that sort of makes it that roadway C plus, if you want, because it's a way in existence and the town's maintained it. So my question was, is 50-foot an adequate width for this? Because it's what you would see in, if it was built as a subdivision road. I got affirmatives back from those folks who said, yeah, 50-foot, much better than 33 feet. So to the point, your question of developable potential for that, if you go down Bunny's Way right now, which I did previously, and I did in fact this evening again on my way out and about, it's wide enough for two cars if you're, you're kind to each other, but really isn't wide enough as you would expect for a subdivision road. So in that, which is why I recommended in the potential motion to the board in my memo, to move to endorse that plan and note that typical statement that we have, that the planning board's endorsement is not a determination in conformance with the zoning regulation. Further, because the planning board has that ability to look at a road and say it is adequate size, width, construction for the type of development proposed, I suggested that the planning board's motion stated further, in its current state, it's the opinion of the planning board that sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction of Bunny's Road do not provide the needs for vehicular access for additional development beyond the two lots being created. And that is a statement that the board can put on a plan that says, we recognize that this is a way, that way C, the applicant has an ability to A and R off of it. But in the planning board's opinion, that road in its current state is not adequate for anything other than additional development of those two lots being created. So if someone was to come back and say, we want to do multiple A and R lots at that point, the planning board would be, would be on record as saying, we don't think the road that exists right now is adequate for that. And if someone wanted to come back and create multiple A and R lots on it, in my opinion, the board could say, as you're asking tonight, that road is not adequate to serve those needs that are proposed in the plan. So it meets the criteria, frontage on that way C as being maintained. And the board in their motion can state, as I said, in its current state, it's the opinion of the planning board, that sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction of Bunny's Road do not provide the needs of vehicular access for additional development beyond the two lots being created.
Part of my concerns is I've been down the road and it kind of winds through the bogs. It's barely sufficient for what's out there. And AD Makepeace is making claim to the land now. So it's not a public right-of-way. It's, what, an easement? And it couldn't be considered a lot. It would have to be considered a parcel. And whether the other two lots are developable or not are questionable due to the amounts of wetland and whether any adequate frontage is provided to buildable areas of the lot. And those are my concerns. Any questions from the board?
Well, I see two bogs. Are these active bogs? No, right? That are in there?
I'm not sure.
I mean, you've got one on the left and one on the right. Says bog in the bog up towards Plymouth there. The road's pretty much sitting right on top of them. If you're going to extend the road, I think you'd have to see COMCOM then. I mean, you just said you don't know if they're active bogs. I don't know either.
Well, let me just get back to the matter at hand. No one's proposing to build a road. They're proposing to create an A and R on this way C, a way in existence prior to subdivision control, to create those two lots. And the board likely is obliged to endorse it mostly because of the fact that the town has maintained it. So when the town tells me, yeah, we plow, we've paved that road, then that sort of changes its character from what we usually see as an exist, as a way prior to, in existence, prior to subdivision control, as something like Robin's Road, which I was introduced to the other day by someone else asking me a question about it. That's a road in existence, and it's a gravel path. And it's probably about as wide as this. So in that case, it's a gravel road. Maybe it existed prior to as a woods road, but it hasn't been maintained. So when you get to that level of, the town has maintained it, then it sort of gets some additional respect, that's not really the word I'm looking for, as, as a way in existence prior to subdivision control because we maintained it.
But the town hasn't adopted it. My concern is that Makepeace is laying claim to the property now and saying, they, it might be allowed as a right-of-way to the town at a future time at town, town meeting. So what constitutes a way? Is it a public access road? Or is it a way that was used to access bogs by Cranberry Bog's owners or?
So if I may?
Yes, please.
Those three ways, as defined in 81, chapter, Massachusetts Journal, chapter 41, 81L, is a public way or a way in which the clerk of the city or town certifies is maintained and used as a public way. So underline under A, where it says, it's a public way or a way in which the clerk of the town certifies is used and maintained as a public way, essentially gives it comparable rights to a public way, in my opinion, not an attorney.
Right.
That second way under subdivision control, and that third C, a way in existence. So this was, in my opinion, not an attorney, C, a way in existence when subdivision control became in effect until the town decided to maintain it. And if they ask the town clerk to certify that it's been maintained, and the town clerk checks with the DPW, the operation and maintenance operation, and they say, yeah, we've maintained it, then they essentially qualify for line A. And so we're using the tools that we have to say, the road as it exists shouldn't be used to create subdivisions off of it, shouldn't be used to A and R of the whole thing without some additional attention to, to the roadway, to making some of those improvements.
But, please go ahead.
Well, as a, just as a, as a side note, it seems that this is kind of similar situation to Shoestring Road with Jellystone Park, where that was, it paved, turned into gravel, leading up into that. It was basically, again, maintained by the town, but it's not a town road.
Right. But we determined that only the first 500 or so feet of that road was actually public road, and the rest was.
Right.
After a certain point belonged to private and therefore was ineligible for A and Rs or subdivisions in that regard. But I, my concerns are, is this road, road suitable to be bringing heavy equipment in for development of anything? Can it main, can it maintain or can it provide adequate access for public utilities, power, heavy equipment, water, sewage? Or anything along those lines? And where does that fall to us? Whereas lot three isn't actually a lot. It's a parcel because it's an unbuildable piece of land. And how can we call it a lot if it's, if it's not a lot?
Well, we're going to put a note on the board when the board endorses it that says lot C is not a buildable parcel. It was one of the things that I was expecting to see on the plan. Sometimes they're in a note, but I don't see it in the notes on the plan either. But that falls within, once again, within the planning board's right to make a note on a plan that they endorse.
And.
You mean lot, I'm sorry to interrupt, Tom. Does that mean lot three?
Lot three.
Okay, sorry.
So why wouldn't we determine that it's a parcel rather than a lot?
Well, will we doing that if the board endorses it to say lot three is not a buildable lot?
And what's, but there's nothing on here to say that lot one and two are buildable lots because it's, there's a lot of wetlands and, and there's no, nothing to say that there's any adequate access to these lots. It's, it's not outlined on here.
So.
And that gets back to my recommendation that the board's motions say, in its current state, it is the opinion of the planning board, that sufficient width, sufficient grades, and adequate correction of Bunny Road do not provide the needs for vehicular access for additional development beyond the two lots being created.
What's at the end of Bunny's Road?
A sort of a summer cottage village. I've been down there a couple of times. People are very nice. Even they look at me like, you're not from around here. Because it's, you know, you, unless you had a really bad GPS, you would never wind up down there unless you were going.
I mean, there are people who live there year-round.
Oh, yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
It's a year-round home.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a cool little spot.
I mean, it's, it's almost a matter of public safety that this road be maintained.
So I'm certain.
Not legally by the town.
Yeah. And that may be why the town has paved it previously because of the number of residents that are down there.
Now, in, in my opinion, I would think that we would put the same restrictions on lot one and two without further inquiry or by the boards. There's, there's no way that we could say that those are buildable lots by the information provided on here. And that's really what's being asked.
Well, lots one and lot two would be buildable because it's an A and R because it is a way in existence that the town has maintained. So they have, you know, because of the circumstance of the road, it, they are buildable. But the planning board is saying they're not buildable as multiple lots unless you come back and do some work on the road. And that is what the planning, that's what Massachusetts Journal says under chapter 41, 81C, in the opinion of the board. And so I basically parroted that language from 81, 41C in the, in the board's endorsement. So this plan would say lots, lot three, not buildable. And the distribution letter that goes out to everyone says, move to endorse, endorsement's not zoning, the way's not, the way's not sufficient for anything other than those two lots.
Exactly.
It exists.
So has this gone before Plymouth yet?
It doesn't have to go before Plymouth. We're not creating any new lots in Plymouth.
So, well, I kind of, I don't know, I kind of beg to differ. When I see lot one, it goes all the way down, crosses the, crosses the Plymouth line, Carver Plymouth line, and Bunny's Road goes right in, right into Plymouth. So any work that we approve, if Plymouth doesn't approve, it becomes a choke point. And therefore, the rest of it becomes basically worthless. If you can't improve in Plymouth, then there's no sense in doing anything in Carver because you can't do anything.
Do you think we should do a, a sidewalk or drive-by? What's your opinion, Kevin?
I think we should listen to Mr. Bod.
Can you pull your mic down, Kevin, so people can hear you?
I think we need to listen to Mr. Bod.
Dylan, any questions?
No, I've been down that road and I, I know on Arrow it is. But apparently it must be okay because of what you said about the town had already approved it. But I mean, I, I would be fearful when I went down that road of like a fighter bomb and trying to get down there because it is so narrow.
Right. And, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
Now, it seems like the 50-foot width ends at the Plymouth line.
Yes.
It's, it's not to be considered to continue out to the rest of Bunny's Road?
The, the traveled way, the existing traveled way continues across the town line and it joins the Plymouth Bunny's Road, which is a private way that was the result of a subdivision that was put on record. But that subdivision road, Bunny's Way, dead ends at AD Makepeace's property. So the portion of the traveled way on Makepeace's property to the town line is just exactly what it is now, just a paved road that provides access. You know, there are, there are rights associated with that, that the properties at the end of Bunny's Road have.
All right. So the AD Makepeace property crosses into the Plymouth?
Yes. It's an existing triangular-shaped parcel in Plymouth and it is, as it is shown on my plan, without any changes.
How wide is that road in Plymouth? Is it 50-foot, like you proposed in there?
No, it's actually narrower. So we, you know.
Probably the 33-foot.
That's the 30. Yeah. I tried to ma, initially, we were trying to match the road on both ends. But then, as, you know, speaking with Tom, I think we all agreed that widening it, widening it to the current width of the subdivision road will allow the town to make improvements if necessary. Or if a developer wants to come in and make improvements and widen the road, you know, so, you know, they can do whatever they want. It's not the intent of Makepeace to do that.
So currently, the Bunny's Road, subdivision road in Plymouth is 40 feet wide and it's going to drop down to 33 feet?
And it's. It's going to drop down, again, it's just wherever the traveled way is, which is the edge of pavement.
And then it's going to go back up to 50?
To 50, when you hit Carver.
Well, I, I don't see how that, any of this land is developable as proposed, but the board will accept the motion in regards to this.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one other follow-up point.
Please do.
Because it's sort of unusual, I did check in with the town council on this. And town council's concern was just make sure that lot three says it's not a buildable parcel or not a buildable lot. But because of, you know, the fact that there's a lot of, lot of land down there, I wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, we weren't creating an issue and opportunity that we weren't necessarily aware of and thinking of it. So council looked at it and said, yeah, it's fine. 50-foot's fine. Just make sure that lot three says it's not buildable.
Right.
Would you just say the road is a parcel land that's non-buildable?
Yep. We're going to write a note.
Because it's not a lot.
Yep. We're going to write a note right under where it says lot three. It says, not a buildable parcel.
Is it an existing right-of-way or easement?
Lot three.
The way, the way, it's labeled on the plan.
Yeah, the way is.
It's an existing way.
It exists, but it's not the way in that we carved them out under subdivision control. It's a traveled path. It gets back to that way in existence prior to subdivision control, where they just had dirt, wood cart paths sort of.
Yeah.
Around the, around the land, around the neighborhood.
So the question that I have, because when you travel further up on Bunny's Road, it says that it's private.
Well, the whole thing's private. It, Makepeace owns everything out there.
Okay. So they, oh, okay. Well, that's just it. He's saying that he only owns up to this little portion right here. And then it becomes something else above that.
You're talking about the Plymouth line?
Talking, so at the Plymouth-Carver line, we have the, the part that he's not expanding. And then we hit the Bunny's Road and it says private, 40-foot wide. Whose is that? Because if that's privately owned by somebody else in Plymouth, again, we come back to the point of that road is owned by somebody else, which supplies the, the roadway going into this piece of property. And again, we come into an issue of, well, that's not our, it's not a public road. How can we make our road public when that road is not public?
Well, we're not. The only people who can make a road public is the town meeting. So there's three steps to making a way.
I understand that, but we're, the, may.
Yep.
Offer it up and we're looking at it as such. The way I look at it is if, we're looking at this as a lot, even if it's not buildable, creating that lot takes away the access, the frontage that the other two lots should have. have. That makes the other two lots rear lots that have no access.
I don't think I'm following you.
So right now, without that road, without the, without the Lot Three in existence, say it's not in existence, we have, and let's say that this is a public road that goes right down through the middle. One side is Lot One, one side is Lot Two. They both have frontage. Create a lot down the middle that takes away the frontage from Lot Two and Lot One. Now, they're rear lots with no frontage access. They, that can't, we can't approve that. That can't exist. It can't be made.
Well, that's why it's, essentially, somebody could come in and say, we'd like to divide this piece into Lot One and Lot Two, based on the existing way, without creating Lot Three at all. They could conceivably come in and say, we have a way in existence that the town has maintained.
Yep.
It is a way that is eligible for A and R.
Right.
So they could create that A and R without making Lot Three at all on this dinky little sort of thirty-three-foot-wide strip there.
Right.
It would essentially be Lot Two, Lot Two, and what's left in the middle is a void because you created Lot One and Lot Two. So in creating Lot Three, it basically provides that opportunity for some future improvements to the road. Now, we get back to the potential for a way becoming public. There are three parts of the way of creating a public way. One is the selectmen vote to lay out the way. The second is the planning board makes a recommendation. Town meeting votes that way. And the fourth part is that the town accepts deed or easement to that road within one-hundred-and-twenty days of the end of town meeting. So if we get to a point that someone's saying, we'd like to make this a public way, then the planning board has their opportunity to weigh in and say, we don't think it should be a public way the way that it is. We think there should be some improvements on the way, that it should be widened or something like that. And certainly, anybody who wants to make a way public that's been in existence for a long time, the first thing I'm going to recommend is that, do we know what that road is made out of? Do we know what the base underneath of it is? Are we taking on something that's going to be a future liability for us?
Right.
And we might get to the point where, if we don't know what's in there, someone might go out there and pop some cores in the road and see what sort of base and subgrids underneath of it. So the matter for tonight is creating those three polygons, we'll call them.
Yep.
The one in the middle, the narrow, sneaky one, Lot Three, is not buildable, and it provides frontage for Lot One and Lot Two, which, in the planning board's opinion, is all that should be on those is Lot One and Lot Two, and no additional development without some improvements to the roadway, which is the nature of my suggested endorsement.
I wouldn't even call it a Lot Three, just a parcel of land.
Yeah, like I said, we got a pen. We'll mark it up.
So, I have a pen.
Where does, where's the, where's the electrical access come through? Does it come down Bunny's Road?
There were utility poles running down Bunny's Road, I know that.
Now, is this whole thing paved? Wait for the whole?
Yep.
Looks like.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. It looks like it from the aerial maps.
And do people use it?
There's a number of houses at the end.
People live on.
Live there, they live there. I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah.
That's how I mess.
It's almost like, it's almost like your road, except for this is paved and people live off of it, and it's almost like.
Crystal Lake.
Can't be area.
Okay.
So the road comes in, the road comes in here from Wyndham, right back here.
What'd you say?
There's, it's all.
I mean, do you ever sell? I've never been down.
And then it's walked down here, right?
Yeah, it's all paved.
Here's my picture from five o'clock. See, it makes a whole lot of difference.
I've never been down. I'm just asking all these questions.
That's why.
That makes a big difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is a driveway.
So I wasn't able to get that onto the screen, but that's Bunny's Way as of five o'clock.
That's a whole road like that, right?
That's right at the Carver-Plymouth line.
Okay.
So I'm standing in Plymouth where I took that picture. Cars in Carver.
Okay. And it, so the width of the road is about sixteen, twenty feet?
Um, the pavement width itself?
Yep.
It, but it may be sixteen feet, I think.
So it's up to the board, but my recommendation is that it be restricted to the development of one building lot due to the nature, one building lot, one building parcel, one building lot for Lot One and Lot Two due to the nature of the road and in regards to it sufficiently to handle heavy traffic or anything further than that. Because again, we don't know what's under that road, do we?
No, and I said at this point, nobody's making a road, nobody's accepting a road. They're just carving up that right-of-way, so it's available to give to the town if the town decides they want to take it.
Now, the question becomes if they bring in heavy equipment, and you have problems with road collapse or various other issues due to the nature of the wetlands and the road not being up to today's standards, where does that leave us?
I would venture to say if it's your road, you own it, you got to fix it. I don't know the particulars of why the town has paved it before, whether it was, as I said, a safety issue, whether there was a fallout or something like that. But I was very, you know, pretty surprised when O and M told me, yeah, we paved it. Because typically, you don't pave private property unless there was some compelling reason to do so.
See, I know why Mr. Deion decided to sit on the board, and that's part of the reason is the town came down, saw his driveway, and paved over it and called it a road, and he felt that it was in order for him, well, I won't, I won't put words into your mouth, but that's, that's the reason he volunteered to sit.
Just don't happen to all the people.
So I understand his concerns, and I understand the interests here. But my concern is that this road is unable to handle anything other than adding maybe a residential structure on either of these properties, and I would prefer to see it limited to that, and that Lot Three be considered a parcel and not Lot Three.
Once again, so Massachusetts General Law, as we've talked about before, sort of ties our hands on a lot of things we'd like to see.
Well.
So.
It's an RA, it's an RA district, so it would only, it would have to be, any development would have to be residential.
So to that point, you don't get to make conditions on an A and R plan.
Right.
You get to make statements on them. And that statement that I suggested is not a public way. I mean, it's not sufficient. It's not sufficient. That sufficient width, grades, and adequate construction of Bunny's Road do not provide for the needs of vehicular traffic for additional development beyond the two lots being created. And that, under Massachusetts General Law, is about the best you can do when you've got something like that.
But we don't know what's being developed on those lots is part of the problem.
And you never do with an A and R, because if someone has frontage, they are entitled to an endorsement by the board within twenty-one days. The board shall forthwith endorse a plan. It is one of these three things identified in Massachusetts General Law.
I have a lot of concerns. I will, I will accept the motion in regards to this A and R plan now.
All right, I move to endorse the A and R plan of map one oh seven, one dash four, located at Bunny's Road, eighty-McPease Company, prepared by Beals and Thomas, dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-two, revised May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. The planning board endorsement is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations. Further, in its current state, is the opinion of the planning board that sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction of Bunny's Road do not provide for the needs of vehicular traffic for additional development beyond the two lots being created.
Do I have to second?
I'll second it.
Open for discussion?
Just one point?
Yes, please.
I hadn't seen this plan when I said revised through May twenty-second, actually revised May twentieth, so with your permission.
Actually, well, April twentieth.
It was done April twentieth. It was revised, initial review date, April twentieth.
This one that was handled today?
Yep, the one you got in front of you.
Sorry. Yeah, Thomas, yeah, it was dated April twentieth and revised.
April.
April twen-
Yeah.
Dated April twentieth, revised May twentieth.
Yeah.
It's in that box on the right.
May twenty-fourth is what you have written.
Yeah, I had May twenty, because I hadn't seen the plan. But the plan itself says May twenty is the revision date. See above where it says plan line?
All right.
I'll make a correction then. Revised the A and R that was dated April twentieth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, and revised May twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Anything? Kevin seconded it?
Kevin seconded it. Yep. Motion made by Mr. Gasky and seconded by Mr. Robinson. All right, no further discussion. Mr. Deion?
I'm not sure about it, so I'm going to say nay. Mr. Deion says no.
John Gasky says aye.
Caneely Shea says nay.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sordillo, nay.
That's a nay?
Nay, yeah.
A nay. And we're supposed to make the statement in regards to, I guess it didn't pass, so.
Yeah.
Well, we have to quantify that.
It just means that we don't have an endorsement, correct? Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that.
Well, if we don't endorse it, like, the reason should be stated as to, as to why, in particular, I don't feel that the road is suitable for this purposes, and I have concerns in regards to the wetlands and the developability of the property and suitability of the road for municipal services, plus it also goes from fifty-foot to the paved service of roughly twenty-two feet, and then back out to forty feet. So I see too many issues with this.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
We will advise the soundspur.
So that will be documented, the reason for the nays?
Pardon?
The reason for the negative vote will be documented?
Yep.
Next order of business is Syncarf Carver LLC, one oh four Tremont Street, map one twenty-three, Lot thirteen, map one twenty-four, lots eight three four, vote to accept withdrawal of minor modification.
All righty, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So we had a site visit on this last week or so, and prior to the site visit, we got a notification from the applicant that they preferred not to make any changes to the plan that's been approved, and asked to withdraw their request for a minor modification. And just to clear the books on it, I typically vote for the board, typically recommended the board to vote to accept the withdrawal of their minor modification.
We have it in writing?
We do.
Do we have a representative here?
We do not.
All right. I will accept the motion. I'll accept the motion to vote to accept withdrawal of minor modification for Syncarf LLC, one oh four Tremont Street, minor modification.
I'll make that set motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Deion, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Any discussion? Mr. Deion, if you would?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Caneely Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
All righty, and if I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
So next on the planning board's agenda, we have public hearings for ES Holdings, Peter Sprague, and DK Properties at Forest Street. In each of these instances, we have either not gotten a technical review, or the technical review came in late enough that the applicant wasn't able to respond to it and make amendments to their plans. So all those folks have requested a continuance until they've had a chance to act on that. In the case of ES Holdings and Peter Sprague, that is until June fourteenth, and in the case of DK Properties, till six, seven. We will see the same thing when we get to the second page of the agenda on the preliminary subdivision plans for Solcom Gibbs, for Rewild Renewables, and for Borrego Solar Systems on Cedar Meadow Drive, all requesting a continuance because we haven't had a chance to get the technical information back from them, for them to make any amendments to their plans.
Do you think we can work on this, maybe put some of them on the seventh? DK Properties requested to go to the seventh.
Yep, so DK Properties requested to go to the seventh, trying to keep things to a minimum. I mean, we can continue them all to the seventh if you like, and ask folks if they're going to be prepared to put something together like that.
I think we could probably split it up a little bit to break up the.
Yeah, I really don't know where we're at with, well, we've gotten, we've gotten the review letters from ES and Peter Sprague, from Andy, and they're in the hands of the applicants, and they're working on those.
Okay.
So we could consider continuing those to six, seven, and if the applicant says, yeah, I'm ready to go, take them up, if not, roll them back?
I think that would be a, yeah, a better, and then if they need a continuance from that point, they can request a continuance from that point. So.
But we need to go through them in order, each individually. I'm just laying out the big picture there.
Public hearing continued. I don't need to reopen the public hearing.
I do not, no, just, motion to accept a continuance till June seventh.
Okay, the board, the chairman will accept a motion to continue the application of ENS Holding LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review for Lot Number One off Spring Street, Ricketts Pond Business Park, to June seventh of twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Gasky makes the motion, Mr. Deion seconds it. Any discussion? Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Caneely Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Our next public hearing on the application of Peter Sprague, the board will, the chairman will accept a motion on the application of Peter Sprague, requesting a special permit and site plan review, located at Offspring Street, Lot Number Two, Ricketts Pond Business Park in Carver, Mass. Continued, a continuance requested until June seventh of twenty twenty-two, seven PM.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo and seconded by Mr. Gasky. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Caneely Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Next public hearing, the chairman will accept a motion for the continuance of the application of DK Properties requesting a special permit and site plan review of Ninety-Four Street and Carver in the general business zoning district, to June seventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deion, seconded by Mr. Gasky. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says aye.
Caneely Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That's it for public hearings, and on to other business, we have a request per subdivision regulation six point six point two to extend completion date for Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision endorsement date seven twenty-five, twenty nineteen, and this is the parcel, the lot Offspring Street.
Okay, if I may, Mr. Chair? So within the subdivision regulation. So, uh, within the subdivision regulations, there is a provision, uh, where, um, the board can extend, uh, uh, the, 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 uh, date of construction, uh, if the applicant, uh, makes such a request in writing as they have, as you'll see in your book from, uh, our, um, RBP, there's a letter, there's another letter in there, right? Ricketts Pond Business Park, RPBP.
RPBP.
RPBP. Um, uh, due to, uh, not being able to complete the road, uh, for the reasons they stated, largely due to earth removal, um, in order to get the dirt out of the way to build the road as it's supposed to be. Uh, so, in addition, um, to, uh, the timeframe that we have, the state, uh, under COVID, uh, also created a, an extension of all permits. So all permits were extended, any permit that was in existence between March ten, twenty-twenty, uh, will not lapse or otherwise expire according to the acts of the, uh, an act to address challenges faced by municipalities and state authorities resulting from COVID nineteen, is what the law was called. So, there's four hundred and sixty-two days in the state of emergency. So in effect, anybody who's got a permit that was issued prior to March ten, twenty-twenty, has four hundred and sixty-two extra days to, uh, take care of their business before their permit expires. So, uh, while that's in place, that's in hand, I still think it's a much better idea for someone to come in and ask for an extension prior to the subdivision expiring, because that's what it says in, in our regulations. So, uh, as I pointed out in my memo, uh, while the applicants asked for a two-year extension, uh, oftentimes you see these as one-year extensions, but I think that, uh, coming before things expire is a better practice than after the fact. Uh, and so whatever the date the planning board gives them as an extension, they are in fact extended by those four hundred and sixty-two days of the state of emergency due to the acts, uh, of the legislature under COVID.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Uh, please, uh, well, well, we let the gentleman?
Okay.
I'm good.
Oh, um, gee, well, I'm, I'm looking to, can you provide good cause for the extension?
Well, first of all, there was a, a large amount of earth to remove from the site, and we were limited by the Earth Removal Committee, uh, fifty loads a day, and then with, with COVID in play, and business down quite a bit, we've only averaged about twenty-three loads a day. So it's just a function of how fast we're able to take the surplus material off the site. And, once building starts, um, I'd also be concerned about damage to the roadway, so we don't want to get, you know, we're, we plan to get the first coat of asphalt on the roadway this year, but I certainly don't want to finish the road because I think there's gonna be upwards of thirteen buildings, uh, being constructed on the site when it's all built out, plus I have an additional twenty-one acres in Plumpton that we're just starting to, uh, have site plans worked up on that, so, um, so that I, I know it's, it's been our standard practice if we're doing a residential subdivision, we don't, really don't like to finish the road until all the houses are built, and just not risk damage to the roadway.
All right. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, um, how much, uh, how many cubic yards have you, uh, taken out for the last couple of years?
The permit we have is for, for the Carver side of the property, for the subdivision itself, I have two separate earth removal permits, but for the, for the subdivision itself, um, we're permitted for five hundred and fifty-seven thousand yards, and as of the end of December, our reports to Carver, I think we, we're up to four hundred and six thousand, so.
So you're, uh, as, as I'm, I'm aware, there, uh, it's broken down a certain amount for each year for the last three years?
We did, we did it in phases, but we've gone back and, and received, uh, the, um, approval to proceed with each, each subsequent phase, and we've changed the phases around a little bit with the Earth Removal Committee. It's pretty much being mined as one site right now.
Uh, do we have that info from the Earth Removal Committee?
I have not seen the Earth Removal Per- Permit.
Uh, I think that's something that's important to see.
What's the basis of a two-year, uh, extension?
Pardon me?
What's your basis for requesting a two-year extension?
Um, I'm fine with the one year, because I've already got the four hundred and sixty-two days from the state, so, uh, if, if the one year doesn't do it, on top of the four hundred and sixty-two days?
It wouldn't be on top of the four hundred and sixty-two days. It wouldn't be, it would be running with this four hundred.
Then it doesn't do much good, does it?
Well, I, I, I disagree with the four hundred and sixty-two days, because, um.
Mr. Bott, please?
Uh, I apologize.
That's fine, so, uh, so I went and looked at this, uh, just to make sure that I was clear on that. Uh, the term is called tolling under state statute, and tolling means stopping the clock. So whatever was going on, on March ten, twenty-twenty, the clock stopped. Their three years to complete the subdivision stopped at that point. Uh, and it stopped for four hundred and sixty-two days. So they essentially have three years and four hundred and sixty-two days without coming back and asking anything. But because the plan was endorsed on, in July of two thousand and nineteen, and we're coming up on that, it's good practice to make sure that your ducks are in a row, and that you've got your extension from the town, as well as the, the legislature. So it's going to be four hundred and sixty-two days plus whatever else you do. It doesn't carve out of it, it extends it beyond that.
All right, well, currently, I think we, um, we're, if you're just looking for us to confirm an extension of four hundred and sixty-two days, I think the, the board would be willing to do so, but, uh.
Well, I, I disagree with the, with this whole, um, automatic extension, I mean, because work did not stop during the entire time that, uh, that the, during, during the COVID lockdown. Uh, it, it didn't stop, so.
But that's, that's the state's law.
Uh, the, but it just, you just read it, that if it, if it was because of, uh, COVID restrictions or anything else like that, and this, there, they continued on. They worked the entire time, so there was no COVID restriction that, that halted anything that they were doing.
So, uh, section III, I, I of the law says, "A permit in effect or existence as of March twen- tenth, two thousand and twenty, including any deadlines or conditions of the permit, shall not lapse or otherwise expire, and the expiration date of the permit or time period for the meeting deadline or performance of a condition of the permit shall toll during the state of emergency."
Okay, so.
I would, I would tend to agree with Mr. Bott that it's, it's pretty clear cut that the state says, whatever permits were in effect at that time are extended because I.
Regardless.
Regardless, yeah, of what work was going on or not, it's, if work was going on, you get a bonus four hundred days, if it wasn't going on, then you s- you get the four hundred days to make up. But if the permit was in effect at the time that that was passed, because we've dealt with this on at least one other occasion in regards to this.
And I disagreed with it there, too.
Um, but I also have concerns in regards to our site walk, um, and it, you seem to have, be having some difficulty with maintaining environmental controls, dust factors, uh, and, and it's been well over a week since we've been there, the roadway is covered with rocks, sand, gravel, the gutters are full, the sidewalks are covered, um. I drive by and on a windy day, there's plumes of dust coming off the property, so I have real concerns that your environmental controls aren't being met in an appropriate manner. You've had ten days to clean up the road as, as was discussed during the sidewalk, site walk, that shouldn't, no earth should be leaving your property unless it's in a truck. It shouldn't be being dragged down the street, it shouldn't be filling the water, uh, control systems for the road, it shouldn't be covering the sidewalk, and it should be maintained strictly on your property. And that's, that's my biggest concern in regards to this, and, uh, the board can, uh, force compliance with this?
Well, un- understood.
Okay.
We do have a, we do have a, a water truck on site, we are looking at, um, a product that we can spray on some of the, the higher, uh, stockpiles that we have there. We just have to make sure that it's the right product, because the last thing I want for that product to do is on a windy day, to end up in the pond or in some of the, the neighbors' yards. So before I can do that, um, I just have to make sure it's, it's, it's gonna do what it's supposed to, which would be to control the dust. Like I said, the, the, the roads that the trucks travel on, we have no problem keeping that wet, we can access some of the, the higher piles that we have there, just not, um, not possible at this point, um, so we're looking at, you know, building a temporary road where we can take a hydroseeding machine up and spray, um, like a mulch product on top of it, I'm just, have to make sure we put the right product on so.
Sure.
It doesn't fly around.
Do you have dust controls on the, uh, elevator separators?
On the what?
On your separators, your elevators that are separating, that are, they sit about forty feet in the air, they have a big, one of them has a big American flag on it, are you using water controls on those? No dust controls on those?
No.
Uh, are the trucks required to be covered?
Absolutely.
And, uh, are they, and, and what's being done to keep them from dropping or dragging dirt out, because it's only gotten worse in, in, since we did our site walk, so. I wanna, I wanna see that you've made some effort.
I have not heard of any complaints since, I don't even know when you did your site walk, so I wasn't privy to the site walk, which kinda disturbs me that I wasn't notified that you were entering the property.
Uh, well, the, the planning board has a right to enter any.
Yeah, we, we talked.
We have an active construction site, so I have to make sure that anybody that enters that site is safe, if something happens to someone on that site, um, I end up with the liability.
Completely understandable, that's why we scheduled an.
So, so for the record, we went, we talked to, uh, uh, McKenzie Engineering, Alan was resolved, it's on the site.
Sure, all, all in good, but.
Yep.
Nothing was related to me.
I'll speak to Al.
Yeah.
Um, I, I see you've had your hand up, and typically, this isn't a public hearing, but we will, you, you would have to speak into the microphone and please identify yourself.
Uh, my name's Dan Freeney, Fosdick Road, I represent Carver Concerned Citizens. Uh, this gentleman has been working the site four to five years, uh, has destroyed the largest hill, or the highest point in Carver is no longer there. Um, there are numerous court cases against him right now, the zoning board of appeals is hearing a case now whether to shut him down or not. Um, we've been asking, and we'd like to know, this is four years to, to develop a, uh, flat area, uh, when is he gonna be complete, when is the road gonna be done, and when are the hills gonna be taken through? Because anybody drives down Route forty-four or in that area gets covered with dirt and dust for, for miles. Um, he has ignored the town laws, he ignores what anybody says to him, he promises things, he never gets anything done.
Mr. Freeney, you'll have to not make, this is to the board, this is to me.
To the board, I'm sorry, he promises things, he's promised to use the water before, he never has, he's promised things to the neighbors, he doesn't do anything. Um, we, the concerned citizens of Carver are tired of it, he complains that during COVID, he slowed down, he did not, there were records of fifty truckloads a day coming out of that, and continue to come out of that. He has got a federal mining license, strip mining license, where he is using this property as strip mining, uh, it is assumed that he's made over ten million dollars, I mean, he has ten million dollars in strip mining alone from taking that, the sand from this property. And again, he comes before this board, and he gives excuses, and you've seen it, so that's all we have to say, we're asking you, if possible, to decline his permit.
Thank you for your time. Um, have there been complaints filed with the town in regards to this?
Uh, well, I'm, not the complaint department.
Right.
But, uh, but, uh, it's, I, I don't know.
Okay.
But I can tell you, having been on the site today with our, uh, our conservation agent on the Form A lot that's been sold to somebody else, uh, we were looking at the, uh, the, the silt fence that they, uh, the owner of lot, uh, the Form A lot has to put back up, Brooks, uh, letting them know that. Uh, the water truck was being used, the roads were wet, water truck was going around, it's just a big site, and.
Sure, but it, it should all be kept on-site, so has anything been done to clean up the sidewalks, the roads, the gutters, in that regards?
Uh, I'm not aware of that, or any, any complaints to that effect.
Okay.
But like I said, typically complaints go to the building commissioner.
Right.
Um, and I can certainly ask him.
I, I think is, if we're being asked for an extension, that's something that we should be privy to, um.
So there is dust control on this property, correct?
Correct, it's just some of, some of the higher stockpiles that I have do create some dust.
And I do understand that, I know there's wind, and there's not much you can do.
And I, I.
My concern is actually Spring Street, all the dirt that's on Spring Street and the gutter going down the catch basins, I travel that road every day.
Okay, and, and I, if you travel that road every day, you know, we, we do send a sweeper there, it's not every day, but, you know, we, I have a manager on site, and he's supposed to call for a sweeper, and if that's not being done, I have not received any complaints about it.
I honestly, I mean, I, like I said, I travel that every day coming home from work, and I don't ever see a difference in the dirt that's there, it seems more dirt than less dirt. So that's a concern for me.
And, so, with your request, what you're asking for is two years on top of the already four hundred-plus days that are permitted by the state?
They'll, is that, from the letter, was, was two years?
Uh, we respectfully request a two-year extension.
Okay, no, if, if you want to modify that to one year, that, that's fine.
Um, personally, I.
Yeah, and I'd like to correct the gentleman that was just at the podium, that's, we have one.
You talked to me, yeah.
Ongoing court case, which has nothing to do with this subdivision that we're talking about tonight, it's a separate parcel of land that's owned by an abutter, it's not owned by RPBP. And the ZBA case has been, uh, for Thursday, has been postponed, as we're working on a, a settlement with some of the, um, people that bought the case before the ZBA for an enforcement action, so it's an enforcement action, it's not a court case.
Thank you for that clarification.
Certainly.
I'm inclined to, uh, if, if you're just looking for us, the, the board, to agree, um, to the four hundred-plus day extension as, as proposed by, by the law, I, I would, I would agree to that, and that would give us a, it would put it down on paper that it's good to go, but, uh, if, if that's no good, we, we would need more time, I would think that would give us enough time to assess, um, whether the environmental controls are being properly applied and met, and whether site conditions are appropriate. Excuse me, but I will, I will leave that up to the board, and, uh, is there any motions?
Um. Well, I, I know we, we heard from, we, we allowed Dan to, uh, to speak back there, uh, I believe, uh, one of the, uh, abutters, uh, is present.
I, I am sorry, because I, I did not see your hand up.
I think it'd be good information to hear from her.
I apologize. Remember, this is to me, and personal attacks will not be tolerated.
Mr. Chair, Dorothy Pollitt, High Street, um, I have some concerns, I've spoken with Mr. Opachinsky about, I've spoken, and I've left emails with the town, um, and Mr. Opachinsky, and basically, I live right on the site, if you will, um, lot three in the map is adjacent to a vernal pool, um, I also am adjacent to that vernal pool, it's covered with silt, um, because he was allowed to go within sixty-five feet of all of the wetland, all of the shade trees have been taken down next to the vernal pool, so it's getting beaten down with sun, and it's very quickly evaporating, usually it's not this low until like August, now I can see it going dry in August. Conservation Commission has. Conservation Commission has been aware of this. Um, bordering his Lot Three, there is a hundred-year rain drainage pit. Is that what it's called? Um, which holds the water in the drainage from the whole site, cuz it looks like it's on a level that drains to the site. And you can see, when you look in this drainage pit, a huge pipe that goes to the, the left towards the road. The problem is, in the plan, there is a plan for an emergency drainage that drains right into the vernal pool. That's that drainage pool. Am I making myself clear?
You are making yourself clear. I, I'm trying to figure out if.
The dust and everything. Um, when he planted grass for that drainage pit, it was, must have been planted in just sand. It's all dead. And now the drainage pit itself has eroded, so there's now like a section, maybe six feet wide, two feet down, that if it rains, it's gonna all drain into the vernal pool. I saw empty cartons of diesel fuel boxes. The trash just blows right through. My main concern is, I understand he's got his four hundred COVID days, but can we have a moratorium until at least he controls the site that he has? And forgive me for being nervous.
Oh, done.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, where are we at?
Can I respond to that, please?
Um, you, you can respond, yes, through me.
Conservation has been out a number of times to inspect complaints made by Mrs. Pollitt, and I've been cited for nothing. And you're welcome to take a walk out there, check out the vernal pool. There is no silt in the pool. There's no erosion into the pool. As I said, they were out on the sidewalk today. There was um a section uh from the Form A lot that was sold to another individual where um there was runoff from a heavy storm, but it never um compromised the, the filter sock that we have there. And since then, we've backed it up with some crushed stone to, to filter it in case there is another huge rainstorm for some reason, but none of that material has gone near that vernal pool. Mrs. Pollitt's made a few complaints, um, but honestly, I, I did not respond to any complaints after the first few times she called, um, because I generally found the, the complaints to be without merit. The day that we were installing the filter sock, uh, she called DEP on us to say that we were withdrawing water from Ricketts Pond. And I had to respond to that. And another time, there was a complaint of, of a layer of dust on Ricketts Pond and she couldn't ice skate. So those are the complaints that I started to dismiss, and I felt that it was better. If the complaints were valid, that she'd just take the complaints to Conservation, let them come out and, and investigate, and Conservation has done that. I believe every time that she's complained, they've come out, checked out complaints. She's complained to the Earth Removal Committee. And I've, like I said, I haven't been cited for a, a thing in the nearly four years that I've been there. And same, we do our best sometimes when you have uh windstorms for five days in a row at thirty-five mile an hour winds. Doesn't matter where you go. You get onto Eatonville Railroad, the parking lot's swollen with dust and it's, people don't like it. Um, I am working on it, and um, like I said, I've done a lot of developing um in the area. And people that know me know I always stand by my work. I do a good job, and I don't intend this project to be any different.
Uh, just, you had your chance, but thank you. No, it, it's not a back and forth, but I appreciate your interest. Um, on our sidewalk, we noticed that there were such, that some of your silt fences were missing and your socks were missing, and they were in, over in the area of the vernal pool. And there was clear um runoff into that area, so that, that's just from my personal observation.
And again, if there's a, if there's a complaint about that, I'd be happy to address it, but.
It was, it was made to your engineer. I specifically brought it up and, and notified him that, to be aware, along with the diesel spill and uh the roadway issues, so. Um, those were just things that happened to be noticed that were out of compliance with uh appropriate site um containment.
If I'm happy to respond to any complaints that Conservation has.
I, I believe Mr. Bott did, did receive an appropriate response.
Yeah, so if I, uh, if I may, uh, once again, out there today, I'm not gonna walk around because my, you saw I have shoe failure. But this is uh from today's walk. With, uh, with Brooke. Uh, the silt fence that's missing is on Lot Three, which is the lot that's been sold.
Okay.
Uh, the part that you see the blowout where that stone is at, that's also on Lot Three. In that picture there, you'll see that Brooke walking behind the drainage. There's grasses there. It's a little sparse in places, but the basin itself is in place, intact, and the sand and the grass is growing while a bit sparse. We did look on the other side of the waddles and really didn't see any material coming over there. Uh, and she is currently notifying the current owner, um, Mike Patini, and his builder, uh, whose name escapes me. I sent her the building permit information today to inform them they need to fix the silt fence uh that's along that edge of the property. So as complaints come in, uh wherever they happen to be, uh, the staff is, you know, busy, but they pay attention to it.
Oh, I, I understand that, that maybe where, there's been some miscommunications in regards to this, but uh, at this point, um.
So to your earlier question about where we are now?
Yes.
Uh, uh, my recommendation is, if our subdivision regulations say you've got three years to do something, and you can ask for an extension if you show good cause prior to, then if someone is following the rules that we've set out, then we should, you know, uh, honor those rules and say, you got, you asked for one year, uh, an extension, and you've asked for it before it's expired. You know, let's go ahead and, and reward uh that good behavior, somebody following along on this particular section of the zoning bylaw. I'm not gonna say everybody's, you know, fabulous on everything. But if you got a deadline, and if the deadline is in the bylaw, and if, and the, if there's an opportunity to extend that, then the, the board should consider extending it. Uh, the four hundred and sixty-two days tolls, uh, irregardless. So uh, essentially, it's got four hundred and sixty-two days from the end of three years before anything uh goes awry. But why rely on somebody else to take care of your business when you can take care of your business yourself by coming to the board as they have and, and ask for an extension? And giving them a, and giving them a one-year extension gives you that, and that's why I suggested it, because of the concerns the board and some other folks have had about this. Give them a one-year extension and we'll come back any year and see what's going on on the site at that point.
Um, and by one year, you mean uh?
One year from the date of the endorsement, July nineteenth, I think, July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
So, twenty nineteen.
Right here in front of me, yeah.
So basically, uh, uh, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay. The board will accept such a motion, now the chairman?
I got one question.
Yes, please.
Yeah, it's to, um, you saying you're doing work in Plumpton too on this site?
Not yet. You're going to eventually, yeah.
Does that mean your trucks are gonna be running from Plumpton through that, that site to In-N-Out?
Correct.
Because there's no other way of getting those trucks.
No, it was only, it was a landlocked piece of land and um this subdivision road created the frontage that I needed to develop the Plumpton parcel.
So you'd be pretty much done with Carver, but you'd be working in Plumpton.
Right.
Are you still gonna?
A minimal amount of material compared to what we, what we have here.
Right, I, well, I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, the good, I mean, the good thing is we're able to, we take a right out of our yard, and we either go left on Route forty-four, right on forty-four, so we're really not even traveling Carver roads. It's all state-owned roads that, you know, for that industry.
And I understand that. And uh, I mean, that's fine. It's just a question. Um, and I, I would like to see a sweeper out there more often.
No, no, no problem. I mean, we, we did have one parked there a good part of last year. Um, and we can cer- certainly move it back there and make a, a stronger effort. I would like to see that. I have no problem doing that.
That's it?
Uh, the board will, uh, the chair will accept the motion to uh extend the completion date for Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision through July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, based on appropriate measures to site containment conditions.
Oh, we need to, we need to make sure that we list those containment, that we uh identify that stuff so that uh when
Okay, well, you can make it.
when they, when they walk out, that, that they've got something in their hand that they need to, that they need to do.
If you wanna make it.
Identify the conditions. Identify the conditions with Mr. Pollitt.
Yes, uh, I would, um, maintaining uh the uh clear roadway, clear gutters, uh sidewalks cleared, uh silt fences should uh be maintained and uh kept up to date. Any diesel spills or hazardous material spills should be reported to the Board of Health regardless of whether they meet the DEP requirement of ten gallons.
Dust control?
Dust control. Um, the elevators, if they're using other than gravel, should maintain uh some level of dust control and uh as well as the uh, the piles, if that's tarping, seating, or watering must be maintained.
Okay.
Yes.
Please.
Chairman, um, I'm just wondering, can people, can somebody from, I don't know which board, go out there and check periodically that these things are being enforced?
Building Commissioner's out there pretty regularly.
Okay.
Uh, but before we get too far, I didn't get the second condition. I think I have maintained clear roadway, gutters, and sidewalks. Um, report spills to the Board of Health irregardless of DEP requirements and dust control. What was the second?
Uh, uh, maintain all silt fences.
Okay, thank you.
Um, dust controls on the uh.
Uh, all silt fences and erosion control. All silt fences, okay.
And uh, dust controls for the, the elevators and the piles.
All right, so, um, maintain clear roadways and gutters and sidewalks, maintain all silt and erosion controls, report spills to the Board of Health irregardless of DEP requirements, and dust controls for elevator and piles. Is that it?
Unless the board has any other further comments?
Can we make unannounced visits to just check on things?
Well, the, the planning board is granted right under Massachusetts general law to inspect a site that's under a permit. It's a little odd, but it's Massachusetts, that you can go on somebody's property without asking their permission, but we typically do. Uh, but uh Massachusetts general requires, in fact, uh, uh, when I went to a development in uh Kingston uh that recently made the newspaper for a five million dollar golf uh outing, uh, I actually brought that piece of the law with me, so if the developer came to tell me to get off the property, I had the law that says, well, actually, I get to be here. Uh, I brought a police lieutenant with me, or I called the police lieutenant and said, okay, I'm going out to this development just in case you get a call. With the law in my hand, I sent the sergeant to copy the law and uh just, and that was highly contentious. I, I don't hope never to see anything like that in my life again, but we have the ability to go on the site. It's typically a courtesy that we let people know, and we did let people know about the site visit through McKenzie Engineering.
Of course, I go by it every day anyway, so I'll see. Unfortunately.
Um, do we have a motion then?
I'll make that same motion.
Any seconds?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Robertson, seconded by Mrs. Sordillo. Uh, any discussion? Mr. Deion, oh, please.
Real quick, when is um, um, when, when do you expect a decision with the zoning board of appeals?
I think it was postponed to the middle of June with the ZBA. Again, they, the chairman had asked that we try to reach some type of settlement with um the plaintiffs, and that's what we're, we're doing right now. We're still waiting for a list of um talking points from the plaintiffs and have not heard anything back yet.
Should we find out what the complaints are?
Pardon?
Do we know what the complaints are?
Um, uh, only what was reported to us tonight, so no, we don't.
All right.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
In a second.
Yes. Mrs. Sordillo seconded it.
I don't think, I don't know if there's any more discussions.
Right, so.
Well, I guess Mr. Deion says aye.
Uh, John Gasky says nay.
Uh, Cuny Lichey says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
It looks like you have your extension to seven twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. Our next order of business is request lot releases for Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision, Lot One and Two, since we configured as Lot One, Lot Two, and then Lot Two B.
All right, if I may?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, so uh once again, um, there's a lot of interesting things that happened in Carver, and I think a lot of it's attributed to the turnover in staff and personnel that had over the uh, uh, over the, over the last couple of years. So one of the things that transpired here is we had a subdivision approved uh that referenced a covenant, but there was never a covenant filed uh with the uh, with the development. Uh, so I have asked, uh, if possible, to have that rectified uh by having uh, uh, Mr. Opachinsky prepare a covenant and have it filed with the Registry of Deeds. Uh, just to affect that. Uh, I did have a, a conversation, or I did have an email with town council, but didn't hear back from them on how, on the particulars of this. So, um, my goal was to, is it all, is with all the stuff that I'm doing, figure out what happened. Uh, you can't quite figure out why it happened, but figure out what happened, and what can we do to rectify those things by putting those controls back in place. So I suggested that uh we create the covenant and file it for this. Uh, Massachusetts general law gives uh the developer multiple different options for surety, and the board doesn't get to decide. Uh, but at the same time, the planning board's decision, the planning board's endorsement suggested there was a covenant for the site that wasn't filed. So at this point, it's really sort of odd, and I didn't hear back from council about how to rectify that. Uh, one of the reasons that we're having this conversation is that I've been, I've uh had some conversations with, uh, I, was it, it was you with, about one of the applicants who's got a property he needs to close on, uh, or he's gonna suffer a two hundred thousand dollar uh fee essentially for be, not being able to close. And so I never want anybody to be in that situation. You know, things are expensive as it is. Uh, so if there was a way to put what should have been done in the first place, so we could release a lot in the second place, to get to the point where this guy can close on his lot. Now keep in mind, as I said in my memo, nobody can build on it until it comes out of planning board special permit and site plan review that it's currently under. Uh, but it's a matter of sort of fixing the things that didn't happen before, keeping somebody from having to shell out two hundred K uh for, for something that they probably should have been better advised on, but for whatever reason they weren't. And try to kind of put the parts back together so the board has control over what's on the site, uh, so this fellow can close. Uh, and then come back with uh a bond amount at a future date in order to make sure that the bond is sufficient for what's being done. So a bond has been prepared uh for the work that has to be done. Uh, but once again, we sent it to our, our consulting engineers who are slammed and had the, the issues we've described before about being able to work because of, you know, uh, COVID. Uh, in, in this case, of a particular person who's doing the work, not as a, as a general broad concept. Uh, to say, you know, let's take care of this one lot, let's put the covenant back in place. Uh, and when we've got the full-on amount of the bond that's been approved by council. by council as the form, and the amount that's been approved by our consulting engineer, look at releasing additional lots. Uh, so that's what I have suggested as, uh, sort of a remedy for something that should have happened in two thousand nineteen and, and, you know, if you haven't been a municipal planner, and our two previous planners were not municipal planners before they got here, this is sort of that in-the-weeds minutia, this is pretty easy to for, to miss. I missed it in nineteen ninety-eight when I first got here, and the registry called me and said, is there a covenant with this thing? And so, stuff happens. In this case, I'm just trying to patch it back up from what didn't happen before.
So, as it stands right now, do we have a covenant or a surety?
There's no covenant and there's no surety, either one. And that begs the question, well, is there any restriction on selling this lot at all? Cause if there's no covenant, there's nothing to be released for. Massachusetts law says there should be surety in place, but there wasn't. So, you know, uh, and it says in the law, the, the planning board may, or not the planning board, uh, the applicant may, uh, file with the, with the registry. Uh, no, actually, this is our, uh, this is our, our, uh, subdivision regulations. Prior to the endorsement of a definitive plan, the subdivider may elect to submit a covenant, which gives you the impression that it's an option. And obvi- obviously, they decided they were going to submit a covenant, but it didn't happen. And we get down into Massachusetts general law, it talks about these various types of surety that you can't decide which one you can take, which one you can't take, the developer has to decide it. The board, the town just has to make sure the surety is sufficient. So we've got a, a, an amount that's been estimated by SLT and sent to our reviewing engineer, who hasn't had a chance to tell us what that number is and what sort of contingency he recommends on it. So, uh, at this point, it's very gray because there's no covenant that says you can't sell a lot, but there should be. Uh, and I like to put the wheels back on that, but Massachusetts general law says, you know, you may be able to put a dollar amount on it, but that dollar amount likely should have been nineteen nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen, when this was originally proposed, but it got missed. Alright, so.
If I may, um, I did have my bonding company, um, do a draft of a bond, which I'm happy to give to Mr. Bott right now, and once, um, you know, it's in the amount of don't have my glasses on, but like five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which I've worked with Mr. Bott, uh, in the past, Kingston developed a lot of, uh, subdivision lots in Kingston, and I added the customary, uh, forty percent to market rate prices that, um, you know, road building is, is my, is my, my business, and we put a realistic number on that, market rate prices, and added, um, forty percent for contingencies and inflation. I think that's pretty much a standard. Um, and then my bonding company is waiting for the final estimate from the towns engineer, and they are willing to amend this bond up or down. I have a, uh, an email from them, which I'm happy to provide Mr. Bott as well.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm going to say the bond amount, the estimate that, uh, SLT provided, and I have it on, uh, on my computer here, I'll find it in just a moment, was something under, south of four hundred thousand dollars. I think it was three hundred and twenty, somewhat thousand, or three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Pull that up in distance.
Now, here's my other question. If we release lots one and two, now it's become lots one, two, and two B.
So I, I did amend, um, the lot release form, um, after discussion with Mr. Bott today, and it's just two and, uh, two B, so that a like-kind exchange closing, um, can happen. It's very time-sensitive and if the fellow doesn't close, I mean, this is a guy that's trying to bring his business into Carver.
Is it, is it lot one?
No, it's lot, it's two and two B.
That he's interested in purchasing?
Yes.
So lot one would still be under a non-release currently?
Would be under a covenant if there was a covenant.
If there was a covenant.
If there was a covenant.
So there's no covenant? Can we do it based on uh, approval of the bond? Approval of the amount of the bond in regards to our engineering firm?
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's perfectly fine to adjust that dra, uh, that draft bond amount, cause you said this is a draft bond amount.
And I, and I have, um, covenant filled out, ready to go. It's, it's missing a few blanks, cause I think it, it's gonna, I have, um, two financing sources on that, and I believe we have to, um, subordinate, they would have to subordinate, uh, uh, can't remember which way the subordination goes, but basically, you can't put the town ahead of the, the financing that I have in place right now.
So for the record, that bond amount was three hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety point eight seven. That's the estimate amount, not the bond amount, with any contingencies or escalators on it.
So, here we are, we're supposed to have a covenant. Didn't happen. Environmental controls were supposed to be there, didn't happen. Dust control was supposed to be there, didn't happen. And now, we're supposed to release a lot, so that we can get some sort of an agreement.
Well, we don't have any control over the lot, technically. Cause nothing was ever filed, and that's
Exactly.
And that's the problem.
So.
But we would be releasing lot two and two B and not?
Yeah, I would characterize it as a, 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 an act of good faith between the board and the developer that said, you know, this thing didn't happen, fix it. Okay, I'll fix it. You fixed it. We've got our, 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 our controls that we would have had in place. And, um, you know, we'll ex, release this lot with the approved bond. Uh, in the absence of that, uh, the board could say, we don't want to release anything, we'll roll it back a week. He can take his chances with his closing, with his, uh, with his, uh, with his purchaser, uh, and see how that works out. But once again, to try to minimize the amount of bedlam that is just in the, it's, it, the, 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 just the number of things I have to figure out each day, like, oh, I wonder what happened with that? Uh, it'd be nice to get one sort of off the table and go, that's in place.
Alright.
Books closed on that, we understand what that is.
Well, uh, the chair would, uh, accept a motion to release lots two and two B, uh, based on approval of the bond through our engineering firm.
I don't know if that's the correct wording, cause you don't technically have the lots to release at this point in time.
So, so then what's the purpose of this?
Well, I think there would have to be a motion to accept the covenant first, and then put the wording in that you have, just so that it reads right.
Well, do we have enough copies of the covenant for everyone?
I, I have one, I have one copy.
The, the covenant is, is pretty much boilerplate language. It's the claim for everybody, it's our form, you put, and you basically put the, uh, the, uh, booking page number in for the lot. It's pretty much standard form covenant. Every town in Massachusetts essentially got the same covenant, you just fill in the blanks.
So, we're looking to, ex, did the, well, it was already previously ordered by the board. It just wasn't filed.
Yeah, the decision endorsed by the board said, there's a covenant, but there's no language on the recorded plan that references the covenant.
So, it's already been previously approved by the board?
Correct.
So what is it that we exactly are doing at this point?
We're, uh, my recommendation is to, uh, put that covenant in place, so any of the other lots have to come back and make sure we've got surety in place, and we got conditions in place to get those things done. It just puts our house back in order. For part of our house back in a little bit of order, let's not get too dramatic about it.
So, we are looking to reaffirm the covenant?
Do I understand, Peter, you've got a covenant?
All filled out, booking page numbers, everything. Um, the only thing that's probably lacking would be a signature from my bank and the second mortgage holder, um.
But like I said, the, the, this covenant is not rocket science, this is standard operating procedure.
It's filled out and
Yeah.
Do you need to see it?
Sure. Do you mind bringing it over? I'm shoeless.
You gotta bump shoes, yeah.
Yeah, happened on your site. Didn't happen on your site. Uh, yeah, this is our standard covenant form.
So we're looking to reaffirm it and approve the bond numbers as approved by the engineering firm?
Correct. So, con, uh, contingent on our engineer confirming the bond amount.
The chair will accept a motion, such a motion.
I'll make said motion.
Um, motion's made by Ms. Sordillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Any discussion? Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says nay.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so we've got signatures for this that I'll get from you guys while you're here tonight. We'll get the rest of them signed up as well. Uh, so we've got covenant in hand that we can be recorded. And our motion was for the lot release.
It was to reaffirm the covenant?
Oh, thank you.
Yep, based on?
So covenant in hand, motion to release two and two B, formerly parts one and two, modified by the A and R plan, uh, with a conti, with, uh, uh, contingent on our engineer and town council approving the surety.
Well, we're still maintaining lot one currently?
Correct.
Okay. Well, the, the chair will accept the motion to approve lot releases for lot two and two B based on the surety as approved, uh, through our engineering firm.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo.
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says nay.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Okay. So I got one last question. We, we we did the extension.
Yes.
I know it's been like minutes.
Nope, three hundred sixty-five days.
Yeah, so we, we
Twenty-five, twenty-twenty.
The twenty-twenty-three, the covenant, and the, and, uh, that. So those were the three things we had going on, on the site, I believe. Did I miss anything?
I think we got everything.
Okay.
Um, just, if I can make just a final comment, um, I have purchase and sale agreements in place for all of my lots in the subdivision, so no one wants to get to the finish line faster than I do.
They've all come in front of us.
Going as fast as I can, and market conditions sometimes dictate how fast I can remove material, and if I could take more out on a daily basis, I would, but I'm limited by the truck counts with the earth removal committee. Um, you know, I could certainly approach them and increase the load counts, but I don't know how that would go over with some of the plaintiffs and the case against me, so.
And it's outside of our purview.
Yep, exactly, so, um, but like I said, I'm, my goal is to get this project completed. Landscape, we've got, I think, forty-nine street trees lining the street when it's done, and uh, if you talk to Mr. Bott, I, I do have the history with Mr. Bott from the town of Kingston, I think developed over two hundred house lots. I always saw the street acceptances through to the end, finished. If there was any, uh, drainage issues, ponds that needed cleaning, catch spaces that needed cleaning, I always took care of it, so. Um, I think he would, would voucher me along the lines of developing, you know, like you say, two hundred house lots in Kingston.
When I ask him to do stuff, he typically do it.
Well, thank you for your time here tonight.
No, thank you.
Alright, next item number eight, preliminary subdivision plans, Locum Gibbs Cranberry Company, zero Wareham Street. We have a request to continue this?
Yes.
They still need more time to, uh, complete their application. Have they got the NOI done?
Yeah, this is, this is all back to that, uh, um, Andy being slammed and not being able to get any review information.
And, and they, they requested it in writing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, all of them did.
And, um, what day were we thinking of continuing this to?
Well, once again, because there's, they are the preliminary subdivision plans, which don't quite have the weight of something that's got a ticking clock, uh, I think pushing it out to, uh, six fourteen is fine.
Right, and we, well, they, they requested it and we have it in writing.
And, 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 cause now it gets up to Andy, is, where, are you going to be able to get?
Right.
That stuff for me.
A lot on his plate, so. Uh, the chair will accept the motion to continue the application for preliminary subdivision plans for Slocom Gibbs Cranberry Company, zero Wareham Street to uh, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Deion, seconded by Mr. Gasky. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Alright, and a number nine, preliminary subdivision plan, we have the same request in?
That is correct.
Continue their application to May twenty-fourth, so the chair will accept, uh, a motion to continue the preliminary subdivision plan, Rewild Renewables, Fort Lane, zero Rear Street, zero Rear Plymouth Street until, uh, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
June fourteen.
Fourteen.
I'm sorry, June four, June fourteen.
Been a lot of numbers tonight. It's very hard.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Gasky, seconded by Mr. Deion. Any discussion? Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And, uh, we have a request for continuance for Borrego also?
We do.
Alright, the chair will accept the motion to continue the application for preliminary subdivision for Borrego Solar Systems Inc., Cedar Meadow Drive, zero Rear Ward Street, nineteen C Ward Street, zero Rear Ward Street until June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
I think that said motion.
I'll second.
Miss, motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. Sordillo. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Alright, um, planning board member notes, uh, off the top of my head, we are still accepting applications for the zoning bylaw committee and, uh, alternate to the planning board.
We have had one person apply, but I have asked the select board, I've asked conservation, ZBA, everybody to make an announcement.
Okay.
That, uh, we'd love to have an associate member as a planning board.
Excellent. It's a very tough time of the year to be looking for people to sit, serve and community serve. It's a very important position, and we hope, uh, people will take an interest.
Was it rewarding for you, Rich? Do you want to give us a, an endorsement for people to go, this is the gig you want? You could, you could, you could make, you could, you could, you could, you could close the deal.
I could close.
We, we'd have people lined up outside.
No, I, i- if you're interested in serving for the town, it's, it's a good way to start. I mean, you do have a voice, so why not try it? You got nothing to lose.
What, two nights a week? Two nights a month.
Yeah, it's only two nights.
And the homework that comes with it.
Yeah, it's a little bit of homework, not a whole lot.
And nobody with a
Not everything's on your shoulders.
No, and not anybody with a ruler who's following you around about your homework either.
Yes, correct.
Never used a ruler on any member of the board.
So no, it's a good thing to try, uh, and you never know, you know, pretty soon you could be running for this war too. Getting elected like I did. I enjoy it. Had a nice crowd here.
I expect the internet to be lit up with applications for the position. Now, thanks, Rich.
Alright, um.
All fifteen people who are watching.
You'd be surprised. I, I, I was my line when I was elsewhere, like, to both of our viewers watching, and people would tell me all the time, yes, there's more than, and.
Alright, uh, planning director notes, I believe we're also looking for representative for for Serpide.
Yes. So the chairman of the planning board has previously acted in the role as the Serpide representative. I am one of the Serpide representatives, and there's a second one as well. So the question is, is there a member of the planning board who would like to step up and be the representative of the southeastern regional planning and economic development district?
You know, I'd be thrilled to do this, so.
You look it.
I just, I have given everybody an out, so again, there you go. And it's up to the board to decide, and I will be more than happy to accept anybody else volunteering for this.
It's very gracious of you.
It's a tough draw. Somebody's got to do it. All right. So should we open a voting? Does anybody nominate anybody? Would any of the members care to nominate a representative?
I think you, this is one of the things where you nominate yourself. I think, because if somebody can't make it, then
Like on a suicide mission, like that type of nomination? So, all right.
Most of the people have gotten back from Serpide meetings in one place.
I will.
I'll let you know, I'm going to one tomorrow.
All right.
Get your full report.
I will volunteer at the behest, if the board would agree, and I would request the board take a vote in regards to this.
All right. So you're saying you're going to do it?
I'll second it.
If, if the board feels that it's appropriate, yes, I am making them vote on it, so yes. You're seconded, so. Any discussion?
None.
All right. Mr. Dionne?
I say aye.
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 Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Ellen Sordillo says aye. Tag your it.
Board members, any discussion? Outside of the planning board, I'm happy to announce that it appears that Shane has found a bone marrow donor that
That's wonderful.
So.
God bless.
Fantastic news.
Yep.
And then minutes. All right, we have the minutes of March 30.
Do we still have those?
Um.
Why didn't we vote on those?
No, because Mr. Shea hadn't done his homework, so.
I think I've looked at those before.
Although it says cover planning board joint meeting with the RDA, it should be public hearing by the planning board. And on page five, it says Donna Wyatt from the audience asks if there's a conflict of interest on the vote since Mr. Shea's wife will be presenting at the meeting, but I believe she meant Mr. Gatsky's, Mr. Gatsky's wife.
Yep.
And that's all I have. So the chair will, any other amendments? Chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Robertson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
Mr. Gatsky?
John Gasky says aye.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you. And the next one is minutes from March 31, 2022, which again should be titled a public hearing by the planning board. And then on page, page six, it says in the last paragraph, Ms. Layton indicates 284 builders already own or will own the property. I do believe she means Route 44 Development.
Say that again, please.
Page six, last paragraph.
Page six.
Third sentence, Ms. Layton indicates 284 builders already own or will own the property. I believe she meant Route 44. And it's probably developers, because that's the name of the company. And that was it. Any, any other amendments? So the board will accept a motion to approve the minutes of March 31 as amended?
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo, seconded by Mr. Robertson.
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
All right. And Mr. Bott, any final words of?
Just that we have some things to sign.
Yes.
So feel free to adjourn, but don't go too far, we got some.
The chair will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gatsky, seconded by Ms. Sordillo.
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Cane Leche says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much.